Well, I bit in one of my three bags. In five minutes, I'd be out the door. We haven't had AC in our house since we started.
Really?
We have 68 hours. Good evening, folks. How are you all? We're going to call to order our meeting for Wednesday, June 25th. We're starting with a public hearing for a site plan review for Kimberly-Robishow. I mean, I'm not butchering that. Map, all right, lot 221, 157 Hussey Road. And it's a proposed family childcare facility. We did have a recent sidewalk, which unfortunately I could not make. But I know the other board members were there. Any comments from the sidewalk, folks?
There's plenty of parking.
Apple parking?
Yeah, the South Street looked kind of safe, so people could pull in and turn around and leave in a safe manner. So that was good.
And I was told that you did have a, someone saw the, the
Septic.
Septic report.
Right.
You guys all were fine with that? Anyone here regarding, in the public regarding this hearing besides the applicants?
Yeah, I mean, I'm a neighbor.
Okay. Is there anything that you guys want to say to us tonight? Okay. Anything for you? Okay.
The sidewalk.
Perfect.
Get to listen.
If no one has anything else to say, we can close the public hearing if someone wants to push it and move on.
I make a motion and close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, show your hands. So moved. So we'll begin our regular meeting, starting with correspondence. We have a copy of the sidewalk. Very good. Letter from the Saco River Corridor Commission regarding
Keys of all, on the works.
Keys of all commons.
Joseph Perry.
Second letter from the Saco River Corridor Commission to Danielle Taylor regarding Keys of Commons. This is regarding extension of their permit. Which I believe they'll also need to come before us for as well.
It's a bit cold in there.
Yeah, I think it's just a matter of business versus any major issue.
Right.
And then the New England Carding Challenge, which he asked for support on, which apparently needs to go back to them. And that's all we have for correspondence. Review amendments will be postponed because our illustrious guru in the corner has been on vacation and working 5,000 jobs. Which will let us move on to the 157 Hussey Road Site Plan Review, which you already deemed as complete. And I'll start with questions from my fellow board members.
Pretty much the state, most of their issue, you know. Pretty often, I feel like myself.
I was all set. I think I was going through at some point because of the hydrology report on this. Right? We need to have it. I'd like to see an update because of the
Are you on the, we're on the daycare.
On the daycare? Oh, no, I've done that.
John, do you have anything for the daycare?
I do have something I want to say to you guys, though. Because of that road and the way it gets plowed, you guys should contact some of the selectmen to make sure that the plowing contractor gets through there because the people will be dropping the kids out early in the morning and stuff.
I'll be out.
So make sure.
Safety for them.
So make sure.
I'll be right out.
There's that text hub you agree does look at. Have that. Go ahead and get that on there.
All right, good.
Cool. Yeah.
Harvey, do you have any questions regarding the daycare?
You have a plow in the truck, right?
Yeah, where it stays.
Okay. I just wanted to
It's a good old way to do it in town. Do it yourself. How people get to my restaurant, the one where they just plow their own way there. All right. No further matters. So we would need to vote on approving this application. Someone wants to make a motion?
I make a motion. We approve this site application.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Pass.
Guys, last but not least, with the state. We're easy.
So do I receive, like, a formal approval?
Right, a formal approval letter that you can present to the state.
Okay, do I get it in the mail or email or?
Email hopefully this week.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Take care.
All right. And under new business, we have a subdivision pre-application sketch plan. Properties LLC at map route 13, lot 72.2. It's at the Maple Crest and Fendersen Roads, and it's a proposed 10-lot subdivision. And are you Mr. Lowry?
I am Mr. Lowry.
Okay.
How are you doing?
Good, just for record.
And with me, I've got Julie and Eric Picard. So they're the owners and applicants of EP Properties. So, yeah. Good evening. Can you guys see that all right or?
Yeah.
Come around a little bit?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can visualize it like
Well, we get our copies, too.
If you want me to hold it up.
We'll get our clothes, coffee.
That's good.
If y'all want to move around.
We're not sitting in that row.
I can't get in trouble. I can go to the front row.
You have some bite, right?
About a day.
We have Wednesdays and Fridays.
Lots of paperwork we can throw at them.
All right. Thank you, guys, for hearing us tonight. Like I said, this is Julie and Eric Picard. The property here, as you know, is right on the corner of Fendersen and Maple Crest. It's about a 10-acre parcel, village residential zone. Parcel, it's predominantly open field. The property that we are going to be part of, you know, sort of comes around. They've cut out the Stanley House Lot and comes right on around this outer boundary right there. 10 lots are proposed. The building right down here, the existing building that sits on lot 10 is proposed to be demolished as things get moving forward. Each of the house lots that we show are in excess of 40,000 square feet of total area. They've got 100 feet or more of road frontage. The road, as we've got it laid in, is a 50-foot right-of-way. It's, you know, we haven't done the full design of the road, but the layout that we have is set up to meet more minor street standards. The, it's roughly 500 feet from, you know, right down here at Fendersen on around to where you start to go around the cul-de-sac. So just to give you an idea of scale. Most of the lots, as we've got it schematically laid out, will come off of the proposed lots. The, you know, the only ones that wouldn't would be 1, 9, and 10. And the line of thought right now is that, you know, 1 and 9 would come out to Fendersen, where this is already open to Maple Crest, would probably, you know, continue to come right out that road if, you know, the board was all good with it. Since we submitted our materials, we have gotten wetland info back and came out pretty good. Little, little stretch right there along at the backside of lot 7 and 8, and then presumably part of a larger wetland on the back corner of lot 6. And all of that, like I said, was, came into us after we had gotten you the sketch plan, but we'll show the wetlands on any further plans that we prepare and submit for your review. The property's not in, you know, FEMA flood zones. It's not in a protected wildlife habitat area. By IF&amp;W or anything that we've identified in the maps that are online. Individual well and septic are proposed as well. When he did the, when Mark Hampton did the wetland delineation or thereabouts, he also did some test pits. We've got a report on that with a plan, you know, two passing test pits for each lot. That's what I thought was important to tell you until you guys start asking me what you think's important.
Thank you. You got a question right away?
Well, it was just, all the houses in there, to make sure that there was enough water for all the wells. The hydrology report should be included with this.
Okay.
There's something from, like, a driller, well driller, would that be adequate or? That would be more than adequate. That would be more than adequate.
Is this going to be a paved road going in?
Yes.
When we were talking at one point, or maybe, I don't know if I mentioned it in my letter, I think Julie and Eric are hoping to do this, to be able to do the road and have it to the standard for town acceptance. I don't know what Parsons Field Policy is on accepting neighborhood roads at the moment, but I think we want to at least design it to the standard, the minor street standard, a little bit above the private way, just to leave that option open.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the whole design from, at this point, I think.
You have to, 911.
Yeah. But that's, that's still premature.
Are you guys going to have any open space at all? This is just building lots and that's, building lots and that's it?
Yeah, the way this is, you know, traditional type of subdivision with no
No membership things or clubs or
So no H.O.A.
Yeah. That's why I was asking. A lot of those ones usually have, like, a common area or something like that.
Not enough land.
Right?
Yeah. 100-acre parcel, and you could probably Throw in a couple of something.
It's a lot big enough for them to play on their own.
Our goal and kind of vision I had was to create more of a little neighborhood feel with a cul-de-sac. That way we could get some affordable housing for younger families in there. To draw some more kids into the area for the school system and have a safe place for them to kind of play in there. That's why we kind of designed it with a nice cul-de-sac. So it can be more of a little community.
Right.
Are you going to sell these lots prior to the building?
I don't believe so. I've been, my goal is to build one house at a time and sell them. That way I can kind of Yeah, yeah, and see, see what we can work with, what people want to and I can adjust it as, as people, you know, show the interest.
Right. How about sidewalks and stuff? You mentioned kids and stuff. Are you going to put in pathways or sidewalks?
Help, everything's what we get. You tell us what you want.
If it's a requirement, then we can, maybe we could compromise and do one sidewalk on one side of the road. If you want both. I mean, that's just stuff we need to know.
I think with, I think the design with this would be more of an open ditch concept. Where we've only got a handful of, of lots back into the road. I don't know if the minor street standard includes a sidewalk, but again, we can be flexible to see what we can get in within the, within the right-of-way.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'm just saying with kids.
If we ever looked at, like, having it on the road and that's a requirement, then I'd want to know now. That would be
Right. They've already had it surveyed. They don't want to take land from each lot and make a sidewalk.
So for us, if it's a, if that's a safety concern or it's something that is going to be down the road for a public requirement, if that ever crossed the bridge, I'd rather just have it done.
I don't think it's necessarily a requirement as much as your indication that you're trying to develop a neighborhood.
Yeah.
So it's more of a suggestion, I would say.
Okay.
Just an idea, because I've done, I've been in this much my whole life, but sometimes we'll, we'll do a road instead of 24, 30 feet wide, and they just paint a line. And that's like a walking path on one side.
Maybe the road, that's a good option.
I mean, I'd like to pave the road and have you guys accept it as my ultimate goal.
Yeah.
But I mean, instead of 24, if the walking area, I mean, we've done it before in areas, you just 30 feet of gravel. And then we just strike a line and then there's five feet of walking path in the paved road, and then there's no curbing to rip out with a plow and there is a few benefits.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Just ideas.
Agreed.
Now, when you mentioned low income, there's not much that's
Not low income, affordable.
Affordable, like starter homes. I'm not, I'm not looking to build no
Probably 480 to 520. 1400 square feet.
These days, unfortunately, that's a start.
Right.
You hear that statement? That was what I was going to say next.
I'm building ranches right now and, and they're selling for that.
350,000 square foot, yeah.
A new, young family, it would be a great way to, you know.
Pretty much putting a home that it's a first time or retire.
Buyers or, you know, one-floor living, a lot of simple. We're not going for too much fancy.
There's probably a different standard for manufactured homes. Probably getting it. So if you don't plan on getting it.
No, I think stick build.
We do stick build.
You're building yourself.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I don't really like modulars or put-together.
They work, but
I have a lot of trailers, but they're not homes.
No, everything will be sticked up.
I think more questions will arise when we do a site inspection. This is preliminary. I mean, I think it's great to try to bring more younger people into the community. And there are a lot of people struggling to find that affordable price point these days.
Yeah, I mean, we do a lot in Saco and stuff, and unfortunately, you're starting a house lots at like 200,000, $15,000 permits. Those are 8, 900,000, but you're getting the same house
You're having a lot of success in Limerick.
And a bigger yard.
I don't know why we just don't dig a trench down the whole road and just put the foundations in and
So Limerick has been
But I just, I hired to do my job.
The size of them, the kind of our goal and seems to fit a good spot that there's a lot of people not being able to hit that.
Seems like you're trying to create an avenue for the community, not just cookie cutter stuff.
Exactly.
Yeah, everything is custom.
I probably won't ever see the end of it, but I also bought the McDonald's bed.
Good luck for you.
I'm just saying, like, I, like you said, I won't live long enough to get the gravel out of it, but, you know, that piece would also be nice as, they're the same as this.
Similar.
Some nice roads, two-acre lots or whatever the requirement is, you know what I mean? Just, but like I said, there's a lot of gravel there.
You've got to make sure that you have the permits for that.
Oh, that will be a long time for
I already went through hell with that. I already got, okay. I'm very educated.
Wait till you come to one of our meetings when they're all here, but now, I think that's, I think it's good. Do you guys want to set a date or do you have more questions?
No, I think for just the preliminary, we've already gone beyond what we need to do, so I'm happy.
Well, by all means, because, you know, one thing that's helpful to us is, you know, then what I, I was in a meeting this morning and the planner asked about something. And my philosophy with sketches, get as much out on the table as you can think of, you know, tonight, because, you know, it's similar to, you know, well, you know, like a well drillers report or something like that. We can work on ahead of time and have it so that it doesn't, you know, it doesn't Yeah, but it's not something that we've just got to come back to later. So you've got, you've got a thought, you know.
Streetlights, what's going to be, what are you guys going to do there? None or is it just?
I didn't figure any, but
Okay, no, I'm fine with that, too.
So you're looking for low impact to the area?
Really, yeah.
Most part, if, you know.
Yeah.
It's a typical country neighborhood?
Yes.
We've had, like, we've been trying to promote, like, a dark sky stuff. Do you guys have all the lighting fixtures for that? You know, the shielded lighting from house to house kind of thing?
All we need to know is what it is that you want. I think I know what you're saying, like, if it's a spotlight, it's just in their yard.
Just in their yard, yeah.
Not like seeing the world.
You know, at that beginning stage of, when I'm designing these homes, I'm designing them individually. I don't do the same house over and over and over again, so
What are you saying is on, like, the front of the garage, if we put a light, it has a top.
Yeah, and that's what
It's in their yard and their yard.
You tell me what you need and I will formulate it onto those houses. It's not an issue at all.
So I think you'd see the least objection with the least impact to the area. I mean, development, development is key to our community.
It's not fun with a lot of lighting.
Exactly. Well, development is key, but, you know, we want to preserve our, our way of life, I guess.
Yeah, I've heard a lot of complaints about people that, with the spurious lights from neighbors or businesses.
No, we're not looking to do that.
People do move out here because it is rural, so to maintain that ruralness, we have to keep
We're from, we're from Bucksden, so we're used to this kind of stuff. We don't want city stuff either.
What are you guys' requirement on power? Are you trying to go everything underground, overhead? Just so I can plan. What do you guys?
Obviously, cost-effective wise, overhead is
My suggestion, considering the history of this town with power loss, is underground. We lose power if it rains, let alone the wind.
You know, is it a make or break on for you guys?
No. It's pretty much your option at that point.
Yeah, yeah, that would be your option and whatever you
I mean, it's There would be many poles, honestly, on the main. It would just be short amount of conduit for whatever side the pole is to get to the other side.
Right.
I'm just trying to
Yep.
Help throw everything out there so we can
Right. Everything Well, and obviously you need to take into consideration, if you want to make these starter homes, what's affordable and effective and lots of underground.
Well, that's the thing is, underground gets really expensive versus
There's no trees or anything on that lot. I mean, you could easily take
There's nothing that's going to take those lines down or interfere with them in storm.
There'll be little lines on the other road.
Yeah, on the Fendersen.
They can't take it down.
Maple Crest.
You can't say, well, people will plant on their own properties down the road, but, you know, what we're dealing with is
Yeah. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, it's pretty much your option.
Yeah, because overhead, for me, would be half the cost of
There you go. Ta-da, you just made the decision.
If you're designing, you're going to see that when you get there. How neighborly is it to have underground versus poles in a big open space? That's going to be more in your design and your cost effectiveness. Do you guys want to shoot for the 13th? Does that give you enough time to get into the Smart Shopper with holidays?
That's a good question. I haven't got a notification that the deadline is early, but I will put a note to do the ad tomorrow so that I don't screw it up again.
We all make mistakes.
I'm not even allowed to have an email, so
That way you won't make any mistakes. On a Saturday? It's a Sunday morning. Is it opposed to that date?
So, yeah, so I would
9:10 o'clock?
I didn't think we did. I'm, the restaurant's closed that morning, so I'm not going to have a conflict.
Okay.
It's my last Sunday I'm closed for summer.
So would you rather have five days notification from Wednesday or would you rather have a week and a half? Because I can put it in for the second, hopefully.
If you put it in for the second, that gives us ample time for the 13th, if everyone, Jim, does the 13th work for you?
Yeah, that'll work. Yep.
Harvey, does the 13th work?
9:00 AM, okay.
9:00 AM.
13th, Sunday.
Would that work for you guys?
Yep.
July 13th, you're saying?
Yeah, we just have to make a vote on it.
Sunday? Okay. Sidewalks are either Saturday or Sunday.
That way everybody can
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just making sure I'm
Like, have you enough time to flag everything?
We're timing.
The flags are still around the wetlands. You put yellow
For the roadways.
You have to flag
Oh, we could come out and put a stake there at the road and, you know, there's some stakes going in. Would you want anything?
5:00 o'clock in the morning?
No, Harvey, no.
I'm up.
I'm up.
I get out of work at like 11 o'clock on Saturday night. But flag would be convenient, but anyway. We can't even, we have
Don't ask me to stay awake past 7:30.
Or would you like us to have down the center line of the road?
That's a part of the requirement for the, in the pre-application.
Okay, for the sidewalk? Okay, any other, any lot corners or anything?
I mean, the more we can see, the better, because we can get more feedback.
Okay, great stakes for now.
Yeah.
Till we have a fine, I don't want to pay for the pins until
Oh, you guys will be there. You can tell us what the stakes of, you know, standing for.
Yeah, so great stakes are, are
Yeah, it's probably easy enough for the
Yeah, so we just do the corner of the lots in the middle of the road.
H9 in the subdivision ordinance, 5.4, just, just so you know where you're looking.
We want to know where the driveway is.
Flagging the center lines of any proposed streets at the approximate intersection of the street center lines and lot corners prior to the onsite inspection.
And if you happen to do more, like, flag up all of the lots, the more we can see, the better, because that way we don't have questions for you later.
So would you, would you need us to come all the way to the rear lot lines? Or would the, would sort of, we came in and walked down the road, is that going to be?
In our ordinance, a particular item does require corner, lot corners.
Okay.
Yeah, so every lot corner.
So all the lot corners.
Yeah, in our subdivision regulations, you just want, H9.
5.4.
5.4.
H9, 5.4.
So you'll have
That's on you. It's literally, it's a paragraph long, it's not a big list of requirements.
You'll have a good idea where everything is at that point.
Yeah.
And we won't violate our go in the winter. Roger and Jim have to carry me out.
That was funny.
No, it wasn't. So I need a motion on the 13th, guys, for the sidewalk.
I make a motion. We have a sidewalk on July 13th at 9:00 AM.
I'll second.
At the EP Properties.
All in favor? 9:00 AM, you're on our calendar, guys. Congratulations. Step two.
I just want to clarify, when I do the ad, it's going to be an onsite inspection, not a sidewalk.
It's an onsite inspection, wrong terminology.
That's, I just
Nope, you're
So nobody freaks.
In 5.4, it's not called a site inspection, it's called an onsite inspection. This is part of the preliminary subdivision process, which usually that word freaks everything out. But your neighbors aren't all here, which is a big start. Neighbors aren't here, which is a big start.
They haven't heard.
I've already submitted some of the payment, but the fees are different for subdivisions.
Yes.
Do you want me to go over that real quick?
Yep, please.
So you guys were great, you submitted payment early, but that, it wasn't needed. So, um, so the application fee for a major subdivision, let me make sure I get the right page for you. It's 17 of our subdivision ordinance. It is $200 for the application plus $50 per lot or dwelling. And then a $250 fee per lot or dwelling to be deposited into a special account, that's in the escrow account. So you guys have already paid $175. So we need $25 more for your application fee. And we need $50 per lot for the application fee, so that's 500. So let's say 525 for your application fee. We also need 250 per lot for escrow, so 2500 for the escrow.
Separate account?
Yeah, so if we can have two separate checks, so when we get it to the office, it's clear that one is for the application and one is for the escrow. We just saved you.
So that'd be 2500 for escrow and
525 is remaining.
Do you want to cut those checks like you did? Or do you want us to do it directly? Do you want to cut those checks like you did, or do you want us to do it directly?
We a lot of times will do, have the applicant do larger checks.
We do them when it's a few hundred bucks and just.
Yeah, no, no, I'll take care of it. Do you want them coming to you?
No, cut, make it go right to the town office. What I'll do is I'll send an email to the town clerk and deputy clerk, just so they're aware when they do get a check from you. So since it's coming from you, it will come from the EP Properties.
It will, yeah, it'll, it'll all check.
Is that all right if we submit that, when we send our preliminary applicant, preliminary plan out?
Yeah, because it's, technically it's not due until the preliminary plan comes in. But because we, so the subdivision application is in a separate form, it's part of the ordinance. And trying to format it in its own application is, I can't, I can't do it in a timing manner. So um, yeah, what, what you guys fill out is great. There might be a, a few more things in the ordinance, maybe just give it a look and see if there's anything else that is. But yeah, we don't need that, those funds until we get your preliminary application.
And Julie, what I would suggest is, you know, you get them to us and then we'll deliver them with.
Yeah, we'll communicate and when you want the, when you need it, just let me know and all.
That's right, because.
You have people talking to people.
Yeah, technically.
Imagine that.
Technically, that's your onsite inspection, you guys have six months to submit a preliminary plan. So, you know, if we don't hear it from you for till December, then, you know, that's perfectly fine.
Probably hear the next day.
Yeah. I'm usually right on.
And remember, we can't do further sidewalks once the snow comes during months of December to April, I believe.
March, I don't like doing anything in the winter. I don't like building. I don't like doing anything, so I want, I'd rather get this tackled in good weather.
Do it before it snows.
Yeah.
That's kind of.
I don't, he really, he says to a fault, I don't leave my house, I'm a hermit when it snows, so.
Do we pick a time on that?
9:00 AM.
9:00 AM?
Yep. Harvey, you know you're on it.
And I, I have one request. Any application documents that come from you guys, you do need a hard copy from the board, but if I could also get a PDF copy via the board email. The PDFs directly from you are easier to upload from the, or to the website, especially some of the maps, or if some of the maps come a little too big, too big for me to scan. So if you don't mind just sending me, as you start sending me stuff, just send me the maps and the, the application documents as a PDF too.
Okay, yeah, no problem there. We do typically do that with. A lot of times now anyway, so I'm sorry if we didn't, on this one.
That's okay, we're, we're starting to kind of require it, just because we do get a lot of stuff that's oversized and can't cut on the website.
I noticed when I saw you had your. You know, all the application forms on that, I wondered if that would be helpful going forward, so.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, that wraps you guys up with us. Thank you very much for.
Thank you all.
We'll see you on the 13th.
Correct. And board, good mention that we might want to forego a workshop because we're so close to July 4th and July 6th.
Yeah. Yeah, on the 2nd, a little too close to the holidays. Vacations and playing and whatever.
Still have conditional use.
Guys, have a good day.
Thank you.
I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm fine to wait, but we have.
We definitely.
Applicants that need those forms, need, need those approvals.
Conditional use approvals?
Yeah.
Of those from Desiree? Yeah, she's, she's there, she's working on those. Or actually, our attorney's going to write those.
My god.
So anyway.
Whoever writes them is fine.
We're, we're working on those and then we will, we should tackle, I would say in August, workshop to start looking through our subdivisions and ordinances to make sure they're in line.
Okay, there was, I went to something for SMPDC and there was some girl there who said they got, they got a grant to help towns look through their ordinances.
Excellent.
And she would.
Do we know who it was?
Name was Michaela, I don't know her last name, but SMPDC, you can look it up. But I couldn't, I mean, that's something we could use as a workshop or look into it.
Do you guys want me to reach out to them first and see if I can get some information?
You know, I could probably get information.